Okay, hello everyone. Hope everyone had a nice holiday. Do we have any public participation this evening? No? Hearing none. To consider the approval of the December 19th, 2019 school committee minutes, meeting minutes as written with corrections are as recommended by Superintendent Schools.
Make a motion, we second that, so I'll go ahead.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll start then. I have, um...
Go right ahead.
Correction. Um, page two, administrative reports number two, school committee. I, um, did say the guy's name was Ted. I was wrong. Um, it's Ron Beard. Yeah, instead of Ted Cotton.
Oh, Ron...
Ted Cotton is not...
Ron Beard. There is no Ted Cotton.
Okay.
I didn't say, I did say Ted. I didn't say Cotton, but, um...
I'll say Ron.
Ron Beard. No, no Cotton either. No.
I'll make that a motion with that correction.
Yeah.
Okay, a second on the amended motion and the correction.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? The principal's report.
I have none, as I just saw you were one and a half school days ago.
Okay. Anyone from the school board have questions or comments or anything?
Well, I just had a couple. Um, I was gonna ask Mr. Johnson, any updates on any sub-drivers for the bus? Did you, did we get anybody on sub-drivers?
No. There was, I, I did get some bad news when I arrived at work this morning that one of our drivers in Pembroke passed away yesterday.
Wow.
After many years of service.
Who was that?
Bad story.
Oh, yes.
So, folks in Pembroke, uh, little sad day, but, um, her husband and her son continue to drive for us and they're carrying on. Hope you all missed out greatly.
Yeah. And I guess I can ask, uh, go down and ask, um, Ms. Murphy about any updates on eighth grade graduation? Are there any updates or anything going on with it yet?
That's up to Ms. Murphy handles.
Okay, so we'll go down and talk to her about that. And where, where are we with the facilitators?
That's coming.
Coming, okay.
Okay, anything else wanted?
No, thank you.
Okay. I have a question, and I think I asked it a while ago of the superintendent, but I'm gonna ask it of the school board. I don't know where the answer is. And you are part of the outing club?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I've got several phone calls and several inquiries asking why the outing club is going during school? It's supposed to be extracurricular activity, not on school time.
I can answer that, or I can respond to it anyway. Um, we were, we've been meeting at an outing club since, um, 1999, long time, and, um, have had great participation in the last few years, however. The participation has gone down, and, um, part of it is just the conflicts between sports practices, sports games, and in an attempt to, um, alleviate some of the conflicts, um, we decided rather than one after-school program a month and one weekend program a month, to try something new last year and then this year, and decided to try it, but during the school day and up our game a bit, so that there's an educational component. So, we've, um, we've done a Petroglif thing, we've done a, um...
This is during school time?
During school time.
Because several questions I got was, you know, if you take these kids out of their academic time? And one of the other questions was that this is a stipend position and there's a teacher involved and she's getting a stipend and getting paid at the same time. So, that's, I'm kinda wondering, is it the outing club or is it now a field trip? Because that's the distinction that we have, that, you know, it's been presented to me as outing club is an extracurricular activity, which is after school or on weekends, and now it's become in-school during school time.
Yeah. Um, I, I kinda don't know how to address that one, but I will say that, um, when, when we went to the in-school, the during-school change, um, the teacher that I work with for the outing club is fifth gr- fifth, sixth grade teacher, and her entire class comes. Anybody else who comes, it's optional. The parents, the students and their parents decide whether that's, you know, something that would augment their education, I guess.
Well, this, this one, this one person had the question was basically, okay, so is it an outing club or is it a field trip now? And, you know, this person had concerns about, you know, the stipend being paid and so on like that. And now you have a teacher that's taking children on a field trip, that's being an outing club, and they get paid for the outing club. So, that's... Question I have too, it's like, I mean, it's a, and it's supposed to be an extracurricular activity, and now you're taking the kids out of, you know, school time, so...
Can I ask a question? My, how many times have it happened that they've done that, taken them out of?
On the schedule, and I couldn't print the schedule out because I had a printer malfunction, but, um, I believe on the upcoming events, it's more than three-quarters of the events are during the week.
No, no. Um, it's theoretically half, so once a month minus December where we don't have an outing club. So, it's, uh, September, October, November, January, February.
Write-up from Kathy here that addresses that, that says that five weekday, uh, leave and ten weekend outings.
I didn't see that on the schedule, so...
This is a write-up that she had gave me.
Is the schedule current on, on the website?
It should be.
Okay.
It should be.
It appeared to be the opposite of that.
You know, she talks about students and parents being busy, um, sometimes difficulty getting a bus driver. Um, they do it the five times and the ten times on the weekend. Talks about also when, um, the particular activity that they're going to, if that is open, if that is available. Some things aren't open on the weekends where they are open during the weekdays, um, that it does go along with their science and social studies. You get your sports that interfere.
But is it, is it the outing club or is it a field trip now?
She's calling, this is from the outing club.
How many days, Mr. Johnson, are students allowed to be, you know, away from school? Do they have, like, there's a statement, do they have a number where kids have X amount of days so they can go on outing clubs or field trips? Or any other activities that kids have?
There, there is no set number of days. Uh, there are some alternative types of programs, alternative schools, that actually use the environment as a methodology of learning. So, the short answer is there is no distinct defined number of days that a student can be out of the classroom. Uh, field trips like, you know, have gone on since all of us were in school are generally deemed to have educational value, and students should be in school so they can perform well on tests and, and get more of the classic education that, that is what parents think of. That there is no distinct number, and how much is enough, or how much is too much, are questions that this board can answer locally. It's up to can you discuss? Uh, Mike's point, Mike's concern that we have an advisor who's being paid both as an advisor and collecting the stipend and as a teacher. Uh, I think that needs to be clarified a little, uh, and I, and, you know, I welcome input from the board on, on any of those stuff.
I will say that just thinking back to my elementary education, it was those hands-on things, the things that I actually got, you know, got in the middle of, that I remember most, is when I, you know, a lot of people learn, learn well that way. Um, the looks on the kids' faces when we went for the L-Life runs the last few years. It's amazing to see thousands and thousands and thousands of fish trying to swim upstream at the, at the...
Well, don't get me wrong, but I ask him this, I'm not trying to take something away from the kids. I know it's very important that they have hands-on stuff and, you know, to see owls and, you know, go on the Petroglif and so on like that. It's concerns that I'm getting from people in the community, why are they going during school time? And like I said, one parent asked, he asked, oh, there's a stipend position, so the teacher's getting paid for the outing club and going on a field trip, so...
Yeah.
And that's, that's the concern that I have, which is, you know, is that it is the outing club or is it field trip now? And, uh, I think it's great that they get up to see these things and, and they can go as a group and kind of participate in this thing, but I also have...
What is the statement for that position for the outing club?
I don't know.
It's, it's about, I wanna say, $1,000 to $1,300, $400.
For two people.
Yeah.
So, six hundred, yeah.
But that's the statement that that position needs to, like, $400, because other spending budget, like, the wire normal and stuff.
However, that money comes from Main School Security Trust. So, every year, Main School Security Trust has continued, contributed to the outing club, um, yeah.
So, like you said, you could go, I remember, you know, you guys, and I think it's great that high schools have, uh, that you used to go after school, but you take them on longer trips now, don't you? I mean, like, do you guys take them down to Beale, to the, that down there?
No.
That's fourth grade.
I'm sorry, fourth grade.
Third, fourth grade.
Yeah.
That's when I go in school.
No, actually, we're doing clubs sort of home.
But where did they just go? They went down some big trail and they wouldn't, where was that? They just went?
Sandy Falls.
You know, was it?
Sandy Falls.
Sandy Falls.
We did that at school.
Yeah.
Of course, right now, it's so dark, you know, it's so dark, dirty early that it's hard probably to get them, you know, out before school, what's that?
Well, I mean, you can, you can see it too when, and do it at night. I mean, the amount of hours it's, it's happening.
Well, if, if something on the stipend can be addressed and so on like that versus school time and, you know, outing club is a field trip and stuff like that, I mean, that's what this person had concerns about.
Superintendent's report. You have a quick item, um, in my inbox this afternoon, I received an update from, um, Eastern Environmental, and the Eastern Environmental is the organization that this board voted to, uh, engage for asbestos abatement. And we had some questions at our last meeting, and these questions, I have the answers here in front of me. Uh, does the boiler need to be turned off to complete the work? And the answer that I have here is ideally yes. Uh, as you can imagine, if the boiler was actually on, it generates heat, which, uh, would be too hot for plastic tape, as it is described here that's used in the process. Uh, notifications, uh, the gentleman did say that he would take care of all the required main DEP permits, paperwork, and notifications, and attach the questionnaire to that effect, which my office has. However, uh, there is a five-day, uh, notification requirement before work begins. So, his point is, and this is the final, uh, point that he makes, if we want it done right now, I mean, there would have to be some type of gyration, because it's cold weather and we have to find a workaround, and I don't know what that would be. What we can consider, uh, is repairing the steam, repairing the steam trap ASAP and not trying to fix the ceiling. And the hope is that by repairing the steam trap ASAP, it will not, there will be no further damage to the gym floor, because we talked about the buckling of the floor resulting from steam escaping from the trap, escaping the roam through the ceiling. Uh, if we think that steam trap repair will alleviate that problem, theoretically, you could wait until the weather was a little warmer and shut the boiler down for asbestos abatement.
When is the boiler replaced?
Excuse me?
Or when will replace that boiler?
Right.
Because that work will be done when the boiler is taken out of there, so...
Uh, that, that's also something to consider. So, at this point, uh, the board would have to direct me to either make it happen faster or wait until warmer weather, because whether or not we run the boiler makes a difference.
We don't have backup heat.
No.
Not for that boiler, no.
So, we can't have the boiler run for five days a year.
So, the thing, well, it's gonna be for two days, but the thing is that, now, let me get this straight. So, let's say we wanted it done for the 10th of January. He's gonna file by the 5th of January.
Right.
And then he only, he can only do it between the 10th of January and the 4th of January? Is that correct? He only has that window to do it?
That would be my, that would be my interpretation as well, because you have to give a five-day notification before the work starts. So, you, you, so if it's gonna be more than two days, you'd potentially be, you know, going notification. He, he would know that paperwork certainly better than I.
Would there be anything else from Eastern Heating and Heating on the steam trap?
No, they were down over vacation to fix two or three things, but they did not do the steam trap.
Okay. Unless we've got, you know, a voodoo weatherman here that can tell us when we're gonna get like some 40-degree weather for two days in a row.
May.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe, late May. I'd say probably get the steam trap done right now and see if that'll alleviate the steam going up into the gym floor. Any word on the ceiling? Getting the ceiling repaired or replaced or...
Well, that's the last information I had, is that he would not, the gentleman would not repair the ceiling until asbestos was taken care of. He's afraid of climbing over the pipe or bits and pieces of the ceiling falling, falling onto the asbestos and disturbing it. The asbestos folks, I believe, told us at the last meeting that they wouldn't tear it down themselves.
I thought he said he'd subcontract, though. He'd look for that work to subcontract that out. It's in one of my emails, it's not in this one that I sent to you.
If he's looking, if he's looking to sub it out, you mean, we got a local person that would like the job would be my next question? Or if they don't wanna do it, but...
Well, we had, we had a piece of the ceiling replaced in there a few years ago.
Yeah.
But it didn't involve, you know, working near asbestos and so on like that. It was over the hot water boiler in the back of it, so...
Okay.
But I think, I think for right now, the ceiling is, is kinda held in place by the, those floor life force that have been put in there, so, um, I, I think, um, maybe give Dale a call. He might know some code on that and what we need to do on that ceiling. So, make Dale for maybe unmeasurable, so... Um, thoughts, questions?
I'd like to see us get that steam trap done as soon as possible.
Uh, with the, I mean, the asbestos part of it, there's no safety issue concerned with any of that?
Right now, no. I mean, the asbestos that's on the boilers is encapsulated. The only time it would be a problem if it was disturbed, and that was the, the question that the contractor had with the ceiling. He was worried about, you know, getting in there, ripping the ceiling down and disturbing the asbestos, so... Right now, it's encapsulated and it's not, not an issue as far as where it is right now. But to move it is, is an issue.
Sunday, we were down for open gym and the floor, you know, I'm kinda looking to see where this area is going. Kinda threw over.
Well, there's been a lottery repairs done on that section over probably the last 15 or 20 years or more. So, and the last one was then two years ago.
I believe it was tilting it.
And that was probably a five-by-four, a five-by-six piece of floor. I mean, it all goes back in that whole area where the, where that green floor is. And it's been, you know, probably at least five, maybe 10 repairs or more, so...
I'd like to make that a motion, really, to get as soon as possible.
So, just for the, just for clarity, you wanna prioritize the steam trap? And delay to warmer weather or vapor?
Yes. If that's possible.
Okay, a second on that? Okay, any further questions? All in favor? Okay. Adjustments to the agenda. You have one, I believe, right?
One. Um, I have a request to add, a discussion for a facilitated meeting, and I would...
Put that number two.
You can make that number two.
Okay. New business, do you consider a drop on the following policies? These are the policies that you received at the last meeting, and again, when we're reviewing policies and going for the final reduction, if there are questions that you have on these, if there's something you need a little more time on, so on like that, we can, we can possibly do that, so... DEB, board member on social media. It says of social media, but I'm sure it's means on social media. And this was, uh, an abstract that you received from main school board manager?
Right, travel dates.
I, well, we admit it's kind of self-explanatory in what even our code of ethics are.
Well, I mean, we, we do have a code of ethics, and we do not have that as policy, but it's in the book that everyone is given, okay? And, I mean, it's common sense stuff, you know, you don't, you don't trash a board member. You don't, you know, talk the old, you know, voting and stuff like that. And it's one of those things that's kind of self-explanatory, but this goes a little bit further on social media, okay? Where the code of ethics is just, you know, basically you as a board member talking to another person, or, or this is, this is just for social media, so... I mean, the things that are on there make sense to me.
Yeah.
I mean, as far as, you know, the very comments and stuff that, you know, social media, whether it's Facebook or Instagram or whatever.
I make a motion to read, Dr. Johnson.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All in favor? Okay, you may proceed. This one here might be a little more controversial. GCSA employee computer and internet use, and GCSA that are employee computer and internet use rules. So, this governs school-owned computers.
Right.
The inter-internet in the building, okay, that the computers operate on, okay? It also, um, has to do with the email that the board uses, okay, and so on and so forth like that. So, what this means is that if I have a school-owned computer, okay, there is no privacy in that computer, okay? If I turn around and I type something here and it's, you know, derogatory, I want a website that I'm not supposed to go on, there is no privacy, because that's not my computer. Again, if I have a computer, and it doesn't matter whose computer it is, in the building, using that internet in the building, and I'm doing stuff that I shouldn't be doing, okay? There is no privacy expectation in there either, so, um, you know, it's common sense stuff again, okay?
I'll make a motion, I second.
I have one question. What would be a valid...
First of all, we have a motion on the floor. I need a second, okay?
A second.
Okay, now we can have questions.
Okay, then. What would be a valid instance of administration or, you know, in the school of management checking, um...
I can give, well, I can give you a couple of examples. In the case of a school-owned computer that is in the possession of a student, um, that computer can be essentially confiscated and searched. The history can be searched, you can call up whatever documents may or may not be saved on the hard drive. Cases where that has happened, and there, there haven't been many, but there have been a few around the district, where involved cases, I think the best example would be like a cyberbullying thing. Uh, if a teacher suspected a student of plagiarism or cheating or something, I could envision that happening. Uh, but Mike's point of there is no expectation of privacy, uh, that is very much the crux of the policy and the law. For adults, uh, board members, teachers, ed techs, whatever the case may be, um, theoretically, that communication that's owned, on a school-owned computer, I should say, under the same conditions, the same type of search could be conducted if there was, you know, reasonable cause, probable cause to believe some type of illegal activity had taken place. And I wouldn't wanna speculate. Uh, but for board members, just so all of you know, there's a, there's a one specific thing for board members that I wanna mention, and this can happen. I've, I've never experienced it, but it can happen around the state. Your, your emails can be subpoenaed in court under the right conditions, and I wouldn't wanna speculate that, but... Uh, we, we are here tonight in a board meeting, conducting the business of the school department in open session in public as we are required to do so. Uh, your emails on your school email, name@lubac, you know, school.com, those emails could theoretically be subpoenaed, uh, under the right conditions. They would be considered in the public domain. So, I always advise boards, keep your personal business on your personal email account, keep school business on school email account, and you'll have no problem. But those are some examples of how that might come into play.
Well, I never did it on the school one, so I don't think I will get off of it.
No. I'll stay away.
Well, here, here's, here's another problem that, that creates, okay, is if we have mail going back and forth, it could be agendas, it could be this, could be a question that someone has about a meeting coming up. It could be a question between board members, not necessarily quorum, but of two board members regarding some situation they're working on. It could be, you know, lease, it could be boilers, it could be buses. If for some reason, while using personal email, and one other person is using the school email, it becomes an issue, then that personal email can be subpoenaed. Okay, so that can be a problem. So, my recommendation is, if you're doing any kind of school board business, do it on a Lubac School Department. One of the Google site there, is it a Google site?
Gmail, Gmail.
Email site.
So, you're saying, London, that you don't have a Lubac school?
No, I went down and tried to get on it, well, I'm certain I'm not. I've tried to get back in it, but I mean, I do all my correspondence to Gmail, like with Mr. Johnson.
Right, but what Mike is saying is there might be things that we need to communicate.
You should really be using the school's Gmail account. Okay? You're shaking your head.
No, no, I won't, I wouldn't. I, I use, I'm using my own, but I'm not, I'm not.
Like I said...
I don't correspond with anybody else.
It's, it's just a suggestion.
They call me or they, or whatever.
Okay. Any further discussion?
But do you get information from, like, the superintendent's office?
I pull it off, I pull it off of, of the site. I print it off.
Okay.
So, I got on...
Joanne, let me, let me get a little more specific information, and then just speak to Mike's point. If, for example, a citizen felt that some board member was using their personal email to circumnavigate the process of open discussion, so if somebody thought that two or three of you were talking amongst yourselves on your own private email to decide board business in advance of the meeting, theoretically, your private emails, all of them, could be subpoenaed. And what would happen is our legal services would gather them all out and try and redact it.
But how would anybody know that?
Try and redact it out.
How would anybody know that?
There is no way for anybody to know specifically, but theoretically, the process would play out. Somebody could ask the court essentially for what amounts to as a search warrant, and they would have to show probable cause as to why we would need this search warrant to potentially root out whatever. So, it, it, it's a stretch, but it is possible, and in the trainings that I've taken, that's becoming more and more of a consistent theme, is to use your school email for school business, but...
What's up, Larry? Basically, the stuff we get, you know, the agendas and stuff like that, there might be a question come up, you know, between two board members regarding, you know, building problems, something like that, so...
I don't want anybody...
Okay, that's out there. Any further discussion? All in favor? There you go. Okay. Next one is IGA curriculum development and adoption. Now, this is somewhat common sense, okay? In the past, we've had, you know, different, you know, thought processes on education, the, uh, what is it? Common, Common Core was the big controversial one a few years ago and so on like that, New Generation Science and so on like that. So, it's basically that the school department or the school will actually, you know, have these programs and, you know... have these programs and, you know, stick to it, so. You've had questions on this, I think, right?
I did.
Okay, go ahead.
From now?
Yeah.
Well, one is not a question, but on, under D, it says aligning the alignment, which seems like it's a little redundant. And E, I just, it's a wonderful thing. Curriculum development will be achieved with appropriate involvement of administrators, instructional, and support staff, students, parents, community, and board. So, I just, my question is, is that done, and how is it done?
So, a couple of things I'd say immediately. First, at the elementary level, it's quite common to have what's loosely referred to as a canned curriculum. We've talked about reading and math curriculum in the past, and the ones that we use are canned curriculum. At the high school level, it's much more common than at the elementary level to have a custom-designed curriculum. For example, an English teacher, if they've got a burning desire for a six-week intensive study in British literature, I've come cringing just thinking about it, they can do that. And that teacher would have to show how their six-week intensive course on British literature hits the Common Core objectives, like students will be able to, you know, diagram a sentence, or, you know, understand the difference between prose and poetry. They're going to have to align it, which is the word that's used. So, the answer, the short answer is, at the elementary level, more often than not, it's buy a curriculum, drop it in, we'll take some training. It's already pre-aligned, you know, with the national standards by the publishing company, whether it's Holton Mifflin, or McGraw-Hill, or whoever. But that's not to say that there might be some subject areas where a teacher would want to pick and choose to edit the curriculum based on local standards. And the one I'm thinking of is health. And then when you start getting into topics on, you know, personal wellness, hygiene, reproduction, et cetera, it's quite common to see variations based on local standards. So, what works on MDI might not work in Lubeck. And you have got the flexibility to amend your curriculum. So, if you buy a canned curriculum, not necessarily handcrafted.
So, this would protect them, that this would protect them?
Right, I mean, this policy, approving curriculum is one of the stated functions of school board, approve curriculum, and you approve that by your vote. So, that's what this policy is also kind of getting in a roundabout way.
And you know, Tina, you guys, for, every Wednesday, that's what you guys do for the development.
It could be curriculum, it could be eye observation, it could be with the Trama lady, Brittany Ray, but something along those lines.
So, does it make sense to not, if this letter E is really specific to the high school level, does it make sense for us to have it in here as our policy in an elementary school level?
I think it does, simply because elementary teachers still have the same flexibility. They wouldn't necessarily make use of it as often as a high school teacher would. And the other thing that I would say is, if your staff now prefers canned curriculum, that's not to say your staff 10 years from now might not. You know, they might want to do something different. You know, maybe, you know, maybe there's a group of teachers that want to put their head together and write their own individual curriculum. Having it in the policy just gives you some flexibility out there.
That one I wanted to add also, if we could number E to, with special ed department also, if they could be involved in the development, then they probably are.
Some students don't use, their skill levels aren't where these canned programs are. So, they may be in an entirely different program.
So, what do they use for special ed, for curriculum development and revision? Is that?
Some students may use the everyday math program, like perhaps a fourth grade student may be using the third grade curriculum, or they might be using a life skills math. They might be using the reading aspire program instead of the reading. There's more because they have individualized plans.
So, is that to, like, Eastport then? You know, that group over there, where the main office is, like with Beth, and then they're working on this, or you guys are still working?
Beth and the special ed department work on that.
Yeah. And I wanted to ask Mr. Johnson, when the AOS was formed, and I think we talked about this before to Mr. Johnson, that, you know, one of the objectives was to have the curriculum. There's supposed to be a curriculum director for all of the schools. And why that never was formed? I mean, you said that we're all kind of independent, everybody, every school is at their home.
Right, I wasn't in this capacity back in 2010, when the AOS was formed. But I can share some insights that I think will answer the question. Being proud of the AOS, and at the time, all districts had to show some level of consolidation to avoid a financial penalty that was in the formula. And the AOS was created to consolidate at the administrative level. In 2010, Eastport had its own superintendent, Lubeck had its own superintendent, and Callas had its own superintendent. So, three superintendents became, one superintendent, one retired, and one, I believe, your superintendent here, Lubeck, had a year left on his contract, so he was the assistant superintendent until his contract expired. So, basically, consolidation was done at the administrative level to come into compliance with the law. In an AOS, each individual member town has local control, which means you can pick your own curriculum. Theoretically, all the towns could come together at the AOS meeting and say, let's do one curriculum. There's nothing in AOS law to prevent that from happening. You can do it. But the individual towns do retain local control over their own curriculum. So, if you don't want to do it, the other towns can't commit you to some curriculum that you don't like or don't want to implement. That's not how it functions. And believe it or not, that can be controversial, even in an RSU, where the individual towns are not their own entity, where their subsidy is prorated. If you've ever seen a subsidy printout for an RSU, and this is a little off track, there's one live subsidy for the whole district, and it looks like a percentage breakdown. It looks quite a bit different than our setup. But short answer is, local control is preserved in the AOS. And theoretically, you could, the AOS could vote to create a curriculum developer, or director of curriculum, or curriculum coordinator, but that would be a new position that would increase the budget, and it would cost everybody a share of something based on their prorated amount.
It was just part of the interlocal agreement when they all signed in to do this?
Yep.
And?
Well, that was touted as an advantage of getting into an AOS or RSU to have that ability. That was certainly, that was certainly part of the pitch back in 2010 to do this.
The big pitch was to save money. That was the big pitch that got the vote.
Well. What happened in some places?
Yeah, what happened to that, right?
What happened in some places is that the debt shifting in RSU 24 was a prime example way close by, that some of Ellsworth's debt shifted over onto the smaller towns that didn't like that. RSU 24 still exists, but Ellsworth is no longer a part of that.
I don't have a motion to accept, is all the discussion done?
I'm just going back to letter E. And I'm not at all questioning the idea of, you know, steady revision of the curriculum. I would assume that that would be so. I would suggest that the word "will" be changed to "may", because my question was, when revision is done, is it done with administrators, instructional, and support staff, students, parents, community, and the board? And I think mostly it's happening at the school, which is fine. But then "will" should just be changed to "may" to be achieved, I think.
Did you ever have that, Tina? Where you did you abort?
Well, you guys approved through budget, you take the vote on the curriculum.
Yeah, we still have to approve any kind of changes in the curriculum. A good example is?
No, I mean, it's kind of bringing the group together when they review this to develop. Do you have the administrative, support staff, I know, students, and?
You'll have three, and you'll have administrative, instructional, and support staff. And basically, a lot of this work is done when community members and parents are at work. So, it's hard to get them in on committees.
The only time the board really gets involved in what programs are coming in is when we're purchasing a new program, so on like that. And we did that a few years ago. And, you know, we've got it into, you know, our rules that anything above a certain dollar amount has to be approved by the board anyways. But if any new curriculum comes in, of course, hopefully down the road, if it does happen, we'll be presented with, this is how it works, this is what's going on, this is where it's coming from, this is how it's cost, okay?
I move that we accept this with the following two changes. Under D, say, and in aligning of curriculum with educational standards. And under E, change the word "will" to "may".
Show me where you're going with D again.
Can you, and, and aligning?
Oh. Take out alignment, you're saying? Yeah, it's just aligning the alignment, though.
And aligning the curriculum, so alignment of takeout.
Yeah.
I'll make the, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on the change in the amendment that started what we had?
Under, in the second paragraph, the Lubeck School's department curriculum shall reflect continuous, can we put improvement in? Does that work too?
What did you say, Londa?
Just to add improvement, continuous improvement, which that's a valuable.
Shall reflect continuous and improvement?
Continuous improvement.
Oh, continuous improvement.
Yeah.
Okay, on the amended policy.
Yep.
Motion on that?
I'm going to move that those three changes.
Okay, second on the amended policy?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And the next one is JKF disciplinary removal of students with disabilities, and JFK dash R disciplinary removal of students with disabilities, administrator procedure. Now, as you talked about in the last meeting, this is like the last resort we want to take as a board, okay? And this is, you know, for very serious violations, it could be assault, it could be, you know, something really serious, something that we, you know, it's not an everyday thing that we get in, and so on like that. So, any questions at all? Do I have one?
I just have one. I'm wondering, and I hate to ask everybody in to table this, I'd like to be able to talk to somebody over in Eastport in the special ed department. There was a lot of this that I wasn't comprehending. And it's hard to make any points, and maybe to go talk to Beth about it.
You want to make a motion to table it? You can make that.
If it's all, yeah.
Okay, and table it till when? Next meeting?
Mm-hmm. I'll have an opportunity to get over there and talk.
Okay, so one is making a motion to table this particular policy until the next meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. And number two is discussion on facilitated meeting?
Facilitated meeting. So, the idea of this is to have an executive session meeting for the board to just work on goals and strategies and communication issues. And for those who don't have a Lubeck school email, you wouldn't have seen this because I sent it to?
No.
Yeah. Did you, do I have a private email for you?
No.
I give it to you, no, I'll give it to you. I use all of my, I use all of mine with my email with Mr. Johnson in the office. And I'll give you that one, my personal one.
Okay. Anyway, I talked with each of the board members, and everyone said that they would be okay with hiring a facilitator. I did some research and, no.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay. I did some research and came up with two options, Craig Freshley and Ron Beard. There's a lot more information on Craig Freshley, and that would be the facilitator that I would recommend, the, yes, number one. He is really good at kind of taking disparate ideas and pulling them together and encouraging people to, you know, providing a kind of a safe space for people to speak. So, I just think that it could be valuable for the board.
The question I still have on this, I mean, so what end result are we looking to get to? I see?
Working together as a group.
I see the board functioning and working together as a group. I mean, we're passing these policies, we're getting things done. You know, we talked about boiler stuff, we talked about outing code stuff, and, you know, stuff that, you know, we get questions from the public. And the questions that we see is, you know, board members, you know, coming up, so. I'm still questioning what the end result and what we're trying to maintain.
Well, the last couple meetings have felt pretty tame, but for a little while, it did seem that there were just, that we were at loggerheads, that we were not, you know, people were saying words that weren't being understood by, you know, we weren't understanding each other well. So, it's just a way to?
I think no matter what, and this is my personal opinion, whatever board you have, whether it's a select board, or a school board, or whatever, you've got, you know, some people that have differences of opinion on the board, okay? Because they come from different lifestyles, and different backgrounds, and they're in different parts of their life, and so on like that. I mean, there's always going to be, I don't want to say headbutting, but there's always going to be a little interaction going on, you know, especially when it comes to certain votes, or certain articles that you want to have passed, and maybe someone doesn't agree with you on it. So, I'm just concerned where we're going to go with it. We're going to spend money on something, and what is the end result? What are we looking to achieve the end result? I mean, I think we've got, you know, a board that gets things done here. And I think, you know, the board members, every one of us, has, you know, a good intent to make sure that, you know, this is the best school in the area, and?
Well, one example that I can give is when I spoke with everybody on the board, everyone had, like, a real?
Oh, fine.
Very different response to what I was saying. And I think getting that out in the open and talking to each other about our goals, our strategies, and whether there's conflicts between them would be valuable.
I think we can all agree to disagree, Melissa. And I don't think this is a bad idea, not by any means. But I think we're all individuals on this board, and, you know, like, even our goals, what is my goal for being on this board? Well, I know what my goals are, but they might not be the same one that your goals are. And that will present a conflict. But I don't disagree with you wanting us to do this. One thing that I see is, and it's unfortunate that we don't have the book anymore, it's like, you know, what are our directives as a board member? You know, what is my job? And that's one thing that I think would benefit us all, is to even to have that, to review what your duties are as an effective board member. But all of our goals are going to be different while we're on here.
I mean, we have an ex-select board member. Not everyone was in agreement all the time.
No, not at all.
Okay, and so, I mean, and that's what happens. That's primarily why we have five people on the board. So, this way here, we can't have a tide all the time. And sometimes, you know, I mean, if the board wants to go down? And sometimes, you know, I mean, if the board wants to go down this road, I have no problem. If the board desires this, that's the board's choice. It's my opinion, is I don't know what the end result is.
Well, one thing, and you have two to choose from, Melissa, and I would, myself, uh, you know, both of them, I mean, I prefer to go with the less expensive one myself, fifteen versus seven hundred dollars, I think that's your quote?
Um, fifteen versus a thousand.
A thousand, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Approximately that.
But I, I'm not against this at all. Uh, you know, I, I want people to think of me as being an effective board member, but I'm here for the kids, I'm here for the citizens of this town, and that's how I'm always gonna vote for the kids for us. And, you know, it's, it's not that way with other people, and I know that's why we're all on here, but we're all gonna vote differently. And I'm not calling Joanne, I'm not calling this, like, dear God, just please vote this way tonight, please, I want you to vote this way. Uh, we all have to make our own choice.
And that's not what this is about. Of course, we're all gonna make our own decisions, and of course, we're all different individuals with different, um, ideas. The idea of a facilitated discussion is that, um, we all operate from a lot of kind of unspoken and, you know, maybe even to ourselves, uh, you know, what, what drives us. And, um, sometimes it's good to, you know, to think about it and, and have help thinking about it and recognize those things, and be able to, what a, what a facilitator, what a, what a skilled facilitator can do is say, um, okay, you know, this is what you think, 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 what's common in all of this? And how can we think of ourselves as five individuals in a cohesive group?
I mean, I, I'm certainly not against it. I, uh, you know, I, I feel myself that, uh, a lot of our initial meetings have been negative, uh, and a lot in, somebody said it one night, a lot of mine come from, uh, a lot of times I get emotional, uh, a lot of times I talk a lot, you know, I might talk too much, uh, but it's, you know, it's coming from my care of our school, our students, our teachers, I care about our teachers, they might think that, that Lorna don't care, but I do. I want what the best is for our kids. It's my goal that our kids get every opportunity that we can offer, and I care about our citizens, uh, a lot of them, and, and we brought this up from a town meeting, that in the last three years, our town has, uh, had twenty-eight foreclosure. I mean, our town's, uh, you know, this is a hardship on our town, so, you know, we've gotta take all considerations into that. And, but I'm very receptive to it, barely.
Hey, at the pleasure of the board.
I'm re, I'm receptive to it, and, and being so, um, I witnessed a, a very smart lady resign from this board because of interturmoil. Now, so something was going on at some point, I don't know what happened, I wasn't on here, but some kind of, um, controversy made her get done. And that woman was a, I mean, smarter than probably all of us here put together, I mean, she's a brain, but, um, so I actually got put on here, 'cause I actually lost my counterpart on the end by four votes, but anyway, that doesn't really matter, I, I'm on here by proxy. Um, so I am fine by it. I, I, I don't know what was going on beforehand, I, I do know my first meeting, we were forty-eight minutes before we even got to the, um, administrative report. And to me, that was not, that was not cohesive, that was not acceptable for me at all. So, I mean, uh, since then, we've had two meetings and it's been fine, but I'm fine by it.
And like I, like I did said, citizens are always gonna have a part in, in my book, uh, you know, they're the ones that run this school, they're the ones that give us the opportunity to have our school, and they're always gonna be able to, or should be able to say what they want to say.
Well, um, being on another board for twenty-eight years, citizens actually didn't have a right to speak at all for a long time. The board did their business, it was a business board, and the board did their business. Now, our agenda for twenty-eight years was the last item, was public participation. And you waited till the last thing, and then you spoke. Now, I think that's the way to do it, but nobody wants to listen to that, but I, I still say that's the way to do your agenda.
But you swayed before I came on the board.
I know, that would be my, my saying. But anyway, um, I am all for whatever it takes to get this board to be productive, be pro-school, I want that elementary school to be the best it can be.
If we all let that?
Yeah, yeah, which for us, we're all pro-school, no, no, no.
I think we should probably go with the cheap version, due to the fact that we have to have our roof repaired, our seat belts repaired, our floor repaired, windows repaired...
If it, if it pleases the board, I would simply remind the group that I've said in previous meetings that I would draw from the, um, unexpended grant revenues that we're trying to find a historical connection to and, and really can't, the same pool of money I used to support the security system, sort of the Boney presentation that was done in, uh, October. If the true quotes are a thousand and fifteen hundred, my advice to, I mean, I appreciate you're budget-conscious and, and go with the cheaper one, uh, I wouldn't let five hundred dollars deter you from getting who you want. Make sure you get who you want, would be my advice, because a thousand or fifteen hundred, either way, the money is available.
You said they both stood, Melissa? Well, I think Craig Freshley, the one who's a little more expensive, um, really would be more appropriate for meeting with the group, 'cause he, we're only gonna get a one-shot with this. I think Ron Beard is, generally worked with the group for a long time, so I...
Okay, how long, how long does this take?
Two hours.
Two hours. So, it'd be a regular meeting night? If we, if we, 'cause I would like to get this off the table. Can we vote on this tonight? Is that something that we can do?
I'm waiting for a motion.
I would think the whole thing would, would be an executive session.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we do this with Craig Freshley, um, as soon as possible to get this off the, um, out of the air and see what we can do.
One more item of discussion. I will have to research whether or not you can actually do an executive session.
Yes, exactly.
The board, you can't do an executive session, like, indefinitely, but what I'm, the question I will ask, and I will swap main school management, uh, I will say, can we call it a training? Is there some way, a, a training, a professional development, a something? Because if I have three of you in the room, you, you have a quorum. So, I, I, I'm confident something can be done, so you can, I would proceed with a motion, and let me do the legwork to find out how that can transpire.
All right. I made a motion, it's been seconded. Sorry, sorry, Mike.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Five to two. Okay, and that's about all we have tonight.
We're actually adjourned.
Happy birthday. How are ya?
Um, I could certainly have that, like...
You know, it's gonna be forty-two degrees tomorrow.